One with pride.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Neat. So I do see that we do have a quorum, however, I do need to get a motion to excuse Connie, she is out of town on business.
I will make a motion to call it excuse tonight.
Also. And moved by Kathy and seconded by Jamie, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
I, I oppose.
Perfect. Is excused? So we'll go ahead and move down to is fall for any other business items? Do you have anything for other business tonight?
No.
Alright. They'd entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
I thought that we approved it because consent for June.
I'll second that.
Been no by Rebecca and seconded by Eric. Any discussion? Alright, we'll go for the vote, all those in favor?
I'm opposed.
And carries. Alright, we will go ahead and jump down to department reports since we don't have PD, we'll go ahead and do city hall.
Um, I didn't fit together anything this week, but um, we've got the trees being started on Friday this week. And so we'll have a couple of those trees removed and the really big ones trimmed down. Almost finished with my auditor's annual report. Carly's away on her honeymoon, so she's gone for two weeks. And I think that's it for this week.
And questions for city hall? Alright, thank you. Um, and did we get a public works report?
No.
And we know Jay's out as well. Uh, so we'll go ahead and jump into council reports. Um, not much to report other than it's nice to see that the uh, redic property is is underway and moving along there. Um, yeah, that's pretty much all I have is not really done much. And those Connie sitting.
Oh, I'm number two.
You're up next.
Uh, let's see, I did some more spreadsheet work to help Rachel for her her annual for her.
The auditors.
The auditors report.
The annual report.
Yeah, it was the, oh, it was wages by or no, it was.
Compensated absence.
Compensated absences by breakup.
Yeah.
By its, by department.
Yeah. By cost allocation.
Cost allocation by cost, thank you for the words. That's about it.
Number five.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. Nothing. We don't move, sorry. Nothing.
And also I've been watching the redic property to see how that develops and fits into the neighborhood.
Yes.
Better than the twelfth, like the three stories tall.
Yes. Yes.
As we all speak.
But you're number five?
I'm number five.
Aren't you number four?
I, I, she went. But then.
I didn't see that either, so.
Oh, sorry.
I do not get. Okay, um. Haven't done too much, but uh, I just wanted to be an information person and let you know that that start is being eliminated. And this affects mostly rural people when it does get eliminated. AmeriCorps volunteers are pulled off projects. And what that is, is they do volunteer work, helping build houses and other things. And it also helps these volunteers pay for college. Noah was cut, so there will be no weather balloons, no predictions coming. Having any large weather things will be a thing of the past, but having weather information. The Consumer Financial Protection Bureau is being shut down. And what this does is uh, examines unfair abusive business practices, uh, banking practices, discrimination in finance. Has monetary compensation for those who have been afflicted by these things and punitive bank fees. That's just latest.
So I, I would like to make a point of order. Everything that is said can be stated one way or not or another based on the bank. And so now I've noticed two council meetings in a row, you've used your status update to push the more liberal words and and uh, the more liberal take on things. And I believe that it's our role to be neutral. So I, I find it really hard not to respond with the other side of each of those stories. So, so I, I don't know how we accomplish that wi- without getting into a partisan, becoming a partisan organization.
And I think at that point that we, we restrict it to city of Toledo business only in our reports or things that have impact the city of Toledo.
Yeah, which, yeah.
These are going to impact the city of Toledo, and these are all facts, these are not uh, liberal opinions.
So now I need to come back with Noah, Noah has seen a thirty eight product, thirty eight percent reduction in their budget. See now where all of a sudden we're doing partisan arguing, is seeing a thirty eight procession percent reduction in this budget that is not it being cut.
Yeah, I, I think going forward, as long as we keep most stuff that is specific to Toledo.
And I didn't even go to the, what was the third one that, that, that?
Consumer Financial Protection Bureau.
The company that harasses, there was this, and if they don't pay, they don't pay, then they are they are sought after. That is actually, there, there are two sides to all of these stories. So I don't want to be a dick, but it's, it's tough to sit here and listen to it.
Well, last I heard, free speech is not yet abolished.
There's three minutes twice during the meeting, one, one on topics and one on anything you want, so.
Can I say something? So the auditors did call out council reports, too. They want to make sure that we're sticking to city business and that might affect city business, that's not my decision, but yeah. They did say that um, council reports are for city business only, so I don't know if that helps at all.
And I think if we can, if we keep it specific, because those things, as I was saying, they, they do impact us in a way. But I think it needs to be specific to Toledo. So some of these, like the head start one definitely impacts us because we have like, and the other ones do in a trickle down effect, but I think we need to make sure that we're reporting on the things that are immediately impacting our town itself. But like the head start one, I had no idea and that's, we need to know that. Like that's going to make a huge impact in our town, as we discovered when we started doing the research on how many kids are over there and, and where they're at. So that is a hundred percent w- we need to know. Okay, so we will go ahead and move on. So do we have any um, anything from planning commission today? Uh, I think.
Do you want me to answer, or did you want to go ahead and do?
I, I think, I think Todd, like.
That was my point of order was that yes, the planning commission has been working on the growth management plan. Uh, and the county's plan, and we're fortunate enough to have Todd here, and he wanted to give you an update on what has been happening.
Sure, thank you.
Todd, it's all yours.
Thank you, Stephen. I just wanted to update council on um, and I, I did update planning commission in our last meeting on this. The county has, uh, if you remember, I talked to you before about the county's interlocal agreement for the urban growth area planning. And, and we had decided to abandon that because it didn't suit our needs and we really don't have any, any big urban growth area left. And, and since we're not expanding into the urban reserve area, it was less important. I've been attending the county's planned growth committee meeting and the county pivoted in the way they're applying the the ILA, they're updating their code for how they deal with urban growth areas. And um, and they're eliminating options within code. And I guess um, long discussion short, I think that it would probably be benefit us to be a part of an ILA and in that ILA, we could also help to address some of the um, some of the city's desires to expand urban growth boundary in the future. And, and to make sure that the, the time and the energy that we invest in planning for the urban reserve area, which is not designated for any specific city. But that the county would respect that and, and give preference to the city of Toledo and expanding boundaries. So and that would also, what they're talking about now is that the county is going to process all permits in the urban growth areas, but they'll apply city zoning and city codes to those cities that enter into an ILA. So I think this more limited version of an ILA is probably um, worth some time and effort, and I've expressed that. Um, that the city of Toledo is interested in, in continuing discussions with the county on that. As that continues to evolve, I'll bring that back to you for uh, for more action with recommendations and uh, a little bit more detail. But just as part of the planning commission update, I just wanted to update you to let you know that's happening. And um, if any of you have any questions or comments about that, I'd, I'd be happy to hear them.
Have any questions currently? Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Alright, so we will move, we do not have any members from park board here today. Um, we do have a meeting tomorrow at four.
And the main agenda item for tomorrow is at four is um, approval and recommendation of the comp plan.
And parks, okay. Um, and we do still have a couple of open seats that we are trying to fill, so if anybody is interested in joining in, please reach out to city hall. Alright.
We have Cindy Stater name for the record. Cindy Samco.
Thank you.
It's just a disembodied voice for online, just like who is it?
Alright, no public hearing this evening, no special presentation. And we will open it for public comment on our agenda items.
Oh, uh. Oh, yes.
Is it on agenda items?
Um, yes, it is on agenda items. Um, no, I'm sorry, it's not, no. Public in, but.
Kyle, just per the record, to Jamie's point about head start, has anybody reached out to Reliable, whether for funding, contracts, there would be a payment, never mind.
Nope, this is, this was the first I had heard of it, so we'll reach out to them. Thank you.
And do we have any plan to give them any sort of leeway on that if we need to, because there's a level of, I think we historically gave them a lot of leeway on building, and if they.
Yeah, and rent's really low, so I'll uh, I'll follow up with Reliable this week and see what's.
They went through an executive director change as well. It's Andy Skinner now, not Erin lawyer.
Oh. That was, there was someone else after Erin, I believe. It was Erin and then she left.
Erin moves a lot.
But then they're, okay, so it's Andy? Yeah, I'll uh, I'll give Dallas a call, I usually deal with her. Okay.
If we can help them save it, please.
Yeah. Right. Alright, we will go ahead and jump into new business, I'm going to shuffle it just a little bit, so we're going to start, since we've already got Todd online with us. We're going to jump into the Callet's Meadows, um, the preliminary plat extension. Bottom where we were. Um, and I know we had, so the preliminary plat for Callet's Meadows was previously, previously approved by the council. However, the approval has now technically expired due to the passage of time and the absence of an adopted extension process in the city's land development code. So we, we do need to move forward with discussing doing a extension on that. It would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we um, extend the Callet's Meadows preliminary, preliminary plat extension.
Mayor DeBoer?
I'll second that. Oh.
Yes.
Um, I, I'm not sure if this is more appropriate during the motion piece or the other, but because the code says that they have to request an extension before it expires. There are, there are two, either two different motions or one combined motion that staff was requesting tonight. And that was that um, that council suspend the rule uh, that's listed in the land development code, um, section twenty dot O seven. Um, requiring the applicant request an extension before the expiration of the plat. So you're suspending that rule that's in your code for this action, and then the second action would be to grant them a one-year extension um, from today's date, basically. So those are the two requests that we're making, so I, I don't know if it's more appropriate now or, or later, but I wanted to jump in and just, just make sure that was clear, that you need to first defend that rule, otherwise you can't, you can't extend it because the, the code says you can't do that because they haven't followed the code. But if you defend that section of code for this action, then take the action, I, I think that works just fine.
So I need to amend my motion to, to suspend the standard one-year expiration on the preliminary plat extension. And then approve Callet's Meadows preliminary plat extension.
Another year.
And I'll second that again. Then I'll, Todd, Todd can tell us what the pros and cons of this are and, and what are the pitfalls.
So um, so I, I mean, basically with the plat being expired, the work that they put forward on the civil engineering plan approval, which is nearing completion um, would be lost by the applicant. So that's a significant investment in time and, and resources that they've made in trying to get that done. Uh, the, the time limit in city code for a, a one-year approval for, for a plat, especially of this size, is pretty short. It takes a long time often to work through a lot of the technical design issues, so I think we might consider revisiting that in future code updates as a whole. But um, the downside to the city is that if, if any of your regulations or um, any of your um, yeah, I guess any, if any of your development regulations or environmental regulations had changed since the approval, that this would vest them back to the previous code because you're extending the approval that was granted under those, but um, I don't really believe there's been any significant changes um, to code, so I don't really think there's a big downside for the city and that, and that, that's why I was recommending that that you all approve their extension request.
I need to amend it one more time, please say, for this particular application.
And it, and I'll second that if that was.
Okay. Alright.
So now that reads, that reads as.
Yes.
I wrote it right here, just write what it should be.
Suspend twenty points.
The, yes, suspend the standard one-year expiration for Callet's Meadows on this particular project. And then grant them the Callet's Meadows preliminary plat extension.
That's one year.
For one year.
Great.
Additional.
I think just to be official, I'm a second event, as spoken.
And Rachel, you should probably take note of any further requests for expansion to see if our regulations have changed.
Does anybody have any, any questions, any concerns on this?
It's nice to see that they're looking to break ground this year.
Alright, well, if we don't have any further discussion on that, I'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor?
I, I.
Opposed? Great, perfect. Alright, so.
Mayor, I believe that's my last item on the agenda, so if I could be excused.
Absolutely. Thank you for joining tonight, Todd.
Thanks, Todd.
Thank you very much.
Alright, now we'll get us back in line. So next order of business is ordinance eight two zero. That is the ordinance of the city of Toledo, Washington amending Toledo municipal code section eight dash four dash seventeen to require the installation of customer-side water shut-off valves during permitted exterior plumbing work to protect municipal infrastructure and enhance, enhance customer safe.
I'm going to motion that we accept ordinance eight twenty.
I'll second that.
And moved by Eric and seconded by Rebecca, we'll go ahead and open it up for discussion.
I'm wondering if this is a case where we want to tie this to any permit of a specific size. Just to get it done. I don't know. I would be asking public works.
And I, we did talk to them a little bit about this as well and, and you know, the, the benefits of it, and I, I know my, my whole thing was, I was like, is it any work if they're doing, any time that they have to shut the water off, this is what we're looking for. And they were, and they were saying, you know, any of the exterior work, but I, I do feel like, you know, with the aging homes and the pipes that are in them and we, you know, we see these leak requests coming in, I'm like, it makes sense to have a shut-off being placed into every one of these. I think anytime their water needs to be shut off for work to be done, whether it's interior or exterior, it should have that valve put in there. Just because, I mean, the number of times that, you know, there, something happens on a weekend and we've got to call one of the guys and just shut the water off for them and then come back up to turn it on or be in charge for those, so. I mean, I, I do think that this is something that we want to, you know, get everybody on board with.
I know that my, my house has it and I know that Kathy's house has it.
And see, and mine does not, and I want it, so that'll be the project for this summer.
Do we, could, could we offer, so do we charge for a shut-off, shut, turn on, turn off?
Twenty each? Um, I don't know, it's.
I think it's twenty each, for shut-off and, and to turn back on.
I wonder if we could, I wonder if we could, if you're.
Ten is coming to mind, but it might be twenty.
If you're wanting to have your, if you're wanting to do that, I'm wondering if we waive the on and off, as long as you're doing the on and off during business hours or something.
I'm like.
I do like to help people if they're trying to do the right thing.
Exactly.
If it's just something to think about when we're talking about fees.
Hmm. That, and that definitely, I mean, that is something that we, it, it's going to be beneficial to the city as well.
It is beneficial to us because then we're not calling staff in to come in on a Sunday night because.
We're paying them more to come in and turn it on and off, and we're recouping on the fees. And, and I mean, if you think about it, and just the less we have to monkey with the actual meters too, we're not wearing up, I mean, we're not really wearing them out so much, but there's less chance for an issue. If they've got their own shut-off on the.
Let's say now that they're all nice and new, but yeah, I totally agree.
Yeah.
You guys want to amend it to interior and exterior? Plumbing work or anytime the water's off, because right now it just states exterior.
I, I think if you need to get a permit that requires the city to shut the water off, then that could trigger. Even if you're, you know, if you get a permit to do a new, I don't know what, I know people pull permits to change their water heater.
Yeah.
Then that's a great time to do it.
Yeah. You want to amend?
Uh, let's see, I made the motion. I will amend my motion to include that any perm, any any permit that requires the water shut-off will require a shut-off valve as part of it.
That whole title changes.
That the whole title does change, does that mean we're going away and coming back for a re-read?
Yep.
What do you want to do? Do you want to get this in and then change it later or?
No, we can redo it. Just, how was it called when you kick back in ordinance? I mean, it's just done. Looking at me. I think it's on that thing right there. You don't know?
Oh, we table it.
You're my woman, babe. Hold on.
It's table, isn't it?
No, because we're changing the whole title.
Right, oh, yeah, we're changing it on.
That's be a whole new number then, Cindy, right? Yeah, so it is.
Well, it has to be a home description. Um, does it need to be a?
Yeah, because it's indicates just exterior plumbing work.
There's a word for it. Kyle's going to think about it right when he leaves.
And one other thing you might want to consider putting in there is making sure that the new shut-off valve is to current code.
It has to be done by a plumber.
No, it has to be the code.
Yeah. Well, I don't know what the word is, but it's, we're suspending it or it's something like.
So we suspend that then.
And come back.
We do a second.
Superseding it?
No.
No.
Dispending. I think it's something like suspended.
The, uh, public works have a, a preference on type of materials, type of shut-off valve that shouldn't be put into that ordinance.
They just want them added. That's um, yeah, public works was the ones that brought it up. I think as long as it's.
But I do see what you're saying, if we have the specifics in there.
Yeah.
Do you think that they care?
I don't know.
Because the, the whole idea is to get them out of the, out of that, so that.
So they won't be the ones turning them on and off.
My water heater's leaking, let me shut my own water off inside my.
Yes.
Uh, Cindy Samco, um, so uh, state the change clearly during the meeting. Amend the ordinance title by motion.
Oh, okay.
We can continue because the first reading is considered an introduction.
Okay.
To the ordinance.
Perfect.
Great, so then, oh, we count.
Yeah, just take the word exterior out.
Uh, let's see, it was amended to say, uh, shut-off valve during permitting uh, during, during any permitting which requires the water to be shut off.
I'll second that. Just take out exterior.
You know, it's on the line, yeah.
No, just remove exterior.
Okay.
Well, yeah, let me, yeah. Sure.
Okay.
So then our second reading, it'll be as final.
Okay. Okay, so the amended motion was made by Eric and seconded by Rebecca. Do we have any further discussion on this? Alright, I will go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor?
I, I.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alright. Keeping in our water theme right now, we're going to go ahead and move down um, to, I guess it's ordinance eight twenty-one, which is the water leak request, this is the first reading. Not popping up. You haven't. Yes, I do. Thank you. An ordinance of the city of Toledo, Washington repealing the and replacing section eight dash four dash sixty of Toledo city code to authorize administrative approval of certain water leak billing adjustments and modify the adjustment calculation.
I'm going to motion accept ordinance eight twenty-one.
Second that.
Okay, with move by Eric and seconded by Kathy, open it up for discussion.
I'd like to see a little more protection in there, uh, preferably for Rachel, because you could be accused of preferential treatment. So if there's a stop guard, like maybe the mayor signs off on it, once it's approved, you can approve it, but the mayor then have to sign off on it so that we have a, a record of it.
Yeah, and I think it still comes to council. It, you guys will still get a copy of it um, once it's been completed, so it's not like something you guys will never see.
So it'll be an.
It's just, it's going to be an informational.
But.
So a double signature?
Yeah.
That's fine, yeah.
A- and I think three hundred's a little high.
That's, yeah, that's fine, we just threw that in there because we weren't really sure. Um.
Not that I want to be voting on them, I just.
I mean, even like a hundred and fifty, two hundred, yeah, three hundred is high, there's usually, they're usually not that high. We usually don't get a lot, but when we do get them, if they're very cut and dry and they're every box is checked that they have what they need, there's no reason really, I mean, it's, it's in our policy, we shouldn't have to. Bring here, so you guys pick a number and we'll change it.
If it was a complicated one and still.
Anything that doesn't fall within our normal policy, you guys will get, it'll same thing, it's going to come straight to you guys.
So do you want to cut it in half?
I don't say, I'm like a hundred and fifty.
Uh, I will amend my motion to include that uh, it'd be a hundred and fifty instead of three hundred.
I'll second that amendment.
And that the mayor signed.
I haven't got the mayor sign off on it, thank you.
And I'll second that.
Or mayor or designation.
Designee.
Designee.
Alright, so the amended motion was made by Eric and Eric and seconded by Kathy. And any further discussion on this?
Without you, Jamie.
Yes, what's up? Alright, I'll go ahead and call for the vote, all those in favor?
I, I.
Opposed? Perfect. Motion carries.
Thank you, it's called an assist.
Alright. And we will move in to the next, which is keeping with water again, we do have a leak request that um, came through. And we will move in to the next, which is keeping with water again. We do have a leak request that, um, came through. For, um. I'm not gonna pronounce her name cuz I'm gonna butcher it. Um, and everybody should have had a chance to read over that. I would entertain the motions. We can discuss it.
Uh, make a motion that we, uh, accept the bodily requests, reduction requests.
Most likely for discussion.
Thank you. Alright, moved by Rebecca and seconded by Jamie and we'll go ahead and open it up for discussion.
Seems a little bit. I. I mean, there's. The effective going cycle of sixty-six thousand gallons must there be a leak?
Yeah, and then you figure with our new tier system, the, the overages are gonna look a lot different than they were last year. People definitely are paying attention to their leaks, that's for sure.
Which was definitely one of the things we were trying to accomplish.
Yeah, trouble scrolling through this. And the, I, I look at last April and their usage was really high as well. That's what, that's what got me wondering. What's going on?
Did they, they had previous leaks on the?
So it was last April or previous?
Like maybe they got a swimming pool. Fill it up every April. Look them up on G I S.
Yeah.
Seriously. It would show, wouldn't it?
Not all, and then, not always.
It was updated in twenty-four. For Toledo.
Retaxing that number.
Can you do address or? Um.
Or.
Let's not put that on.
Oh.
He's like, no.
In their prior bill, uh, there was no. Major, like they weren't up on their, their prior bill either, right?
Um, we have to ask there.
I don't believe so.
No.
I think it was a little bit.
Yeah.
Inflated, but it wasn't.
Okay.
Nothing drastic, so it wasn't like, hey, it had been leaking and then. We didn't do anything and it full-blown ruptured. And even if it did, there's nothing in the, the plan. We're only doing a forgiveness on this one bill.
Okay.
Four thirty-four. Oh, no.
According to our notes, we had Carly posted in the account in May of twenty-four. That there was a leak detected. And in June, on June fourteenth specifically. Uh, they called upset about the bill being high and Carly said that there is a leak and notices had gone out and that that's why the bill was high. So that it needed to be addressed, but that is all that's left there.
And they, they've paid all those bills, right? Yeah, they're up to date. Okay, and they hadn't, they didn't ask for any, any help with that one. I'm assuming that one was not as astronomical as this one talked up as.
Right.
And we've not, we've not had any issues with them in the past.
Okay.
Maybe that they did have their. They've got the invoice for. Yeah, I mean, they. And do. Very even ask if the. The work that was done. It was verified by public works. That it was, uh, it was permitted when they put this in before. The water hydrant, that's a, a yard hydrant. They didn't give permits for this, no?
They did report it five days after. The leak occurred. I'm curious. They reported the leak via email. On the twenty-third of. And that it was discovered in February eighteenth. Was. And was repaired the following day.
Oh, so this is a freeze leak.
Yeah.
Outside PVC.
Yeah.
Uh, I think, I think that. They discovered the leak. And, and took care of it, but didn't.
Yeah. I mean, they, and they did take care of it right away, so it's not like they were letting it go.
And then the former's invoice.
Yeah, that's why I was making sure that we got that.
So just to remember the amount that you're suggesting, it's up in there.
Kinda let sure if I need to permit. But that's more on their contractor than it is on them.
Yeah.
So you got that, you got that five ninety number based on some average usage overall, average on their average?
Yeah, it's the water overage from their current bill. Like if their normal average is a hundred dollars for just water. And all of a sudden they've got a nine hundred dollar bill, yours. If their normal average is normally a hundred, but their, their charge is only seventy, we're still. Gonna go off that hundred dollar amount, their average, and then the overages from there is what we're giving back.
Okay.
So they would reduce by five hundred nine.
I wrote.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, in the.
Yeah.
Of, of the six hundred and eighty-five.
I don't know. But they were on there. Do we have any further discussion?
Okay.
We'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. We'll go ahead and move down to the next item, which is the low usage application that was put in, um. By the life, the chapter, not, but it's by the Toledo library.
And we, we need a motion on it.
Yeah, then I can kinda speak on it.
We're gonna talk about it.
I can.
We don't.
For discussion.
Um, the motion that we accept the Toledo libraries reduction requests.
So it was moved by Rebecca and seconded by Eric and we'll open it up for discussion. So I know it. No, and I know it opens a door for businesses. Um, the only reason is cuz they're at the four oh one C. Five oh one C is a five oh one, yeah. Um, I did get a copy of their income tax returns that shows their donations are extremely low. Um, I said I would throw it in front of council. You guys do whatever you wanna do with it, but they did apply. Um, our policy is strictly for residential, so. I believe we'd have to go through the whole. Process of adding them. I could look into it or we just do like a. Special variance type thing. Yeah, it goes, it, yeah. So I mean, it's something that you guys can have me look into or. Just. They know, I mean, it does.
Um, yeah, maybe look into because they are a, a nonprofit that's, you know, maybe puts them.
Yeah.
Different group than just the business.
Well, and churches are nonprofits too.
Yeah, I love the idea of it, but, but, but it's problematic.
And they still have to, you know, and that it may be that we have to create something specifically for this situ, you know, these situations where it's like you can't use more than this amount. Just like we do with the. Their usage is really low. It's like three hundred gallons. So we could also look into doing just a contract and, you know, make up a new. Like we did. Ordinance, like with the baseball field, is any nonprofits, but again, that's. Yeah.
This involves some of that, even though it cost us eight thousand dollars last year.
I know. I know, yeah, I mean, you guys, I just said I would throw it out there and see what I could do, um. But what you guys. I mean, this is something we could look at at budget. Doing something with. The nonprofits or down the road or. Cuz I mean, I, I can see the, the give, the give, you know, helping out the nonprofits. And then, but I don't wanna see it abused. Whereas, you know, you have to keep extremely low water numbers and because otherwise then you're gonna have everybody and their brother being like, oh, well. We can fall under, you know, these categories and.
Yeah.
But it's.
And, and that might not even be considered abuse. It's just you're gonna qualify a whole bunch of. A whole bunch of your, like, like potentially the church and, and the cemetery and. And the other.
And that maybe that we have to put, you know, um, specific numbers on there that they, you know. They'll be one of those things too that becomes a disqualifier or, or, you know, we definitely could do like we do with the baseball fields where it's specific to. Yeah, and I don't think it's very hard to get approved to be a nonprofit for certain things, and then we might have residents trying to jump on that. As well, so, I don't know.
I do appreciate that's a public service. That's great for the town. I would love to support them any way I can, but. Also have to represent the business unit, which is water sewer. I would almost rather have a fundraiser to help pay for it than I would.
Yeah.
Don't.
Just nonprofits without a kitchen, so if they're never going to be able to abuse it, that's a non.
It's not them that we're worried about abusing it. It's we're worried about just opening up a door for. Other, other people to.
But most other places have a kitchen. That can, you know what I'm saying? That can increase the water usage and this has a toilet. So.
It just opens a can of worms.
It does.
It really does.
So Gallery five oh five is currently the sole occupant in that building, so now does that qualify? And. And. Yeah.
To that point too, Cindy's got the community foundation upstairs of her building representative. Does that qualify and?
Yeah.
You might consider. Adding micro tier to the thing where it's, if, if you stayed under five hundred for the past twelve months and then you qualify for a micro tier of the system.
That's kind of a good idea. We could look at it the next time we do rates.
Yeah, and, and we can see how the, cuz it, it was, it was designed to help low-income citizens.
Yeah.
And, and I would hate for it to be used up by not low-income citizens.
Yeah, yeah. We can table it and look at it next time we're doing reads.
I would, I meant my motion to say we table this until we're ready to talk about it bigger.
So. So, uh. We've got amended motion to table the low-usage application made by Eric and seconded by Rebecca. Um, so we will go ahead and table that until the next rate discussion.
Where do you vote?
Oh. But we didn't.
Oh, well, we may not.
I'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Opposed? Actually, perfect, tabled. So we've already taken care of that. We'll move down to our unfinished business. On what's coming last.
More water.
I know. It's a whole lot of water, um. There you go. So, uh, we are doing the second reading for ordinance, um, eight one eight. An ordinance of the city of Toledo, Washington, establishing a policy for setting water meters dormant for demolition construction. Uh, lasting more than thirty days, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Um, make a motion that we accept ordinance number eight one eight.
Also. It's been moved by Rebecca and seconded by Jamie. We'll open it up for any discussion. Yep. Just make it true. Alright, we'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Then we will move down to the second reading for ordinance number eight one nine. An ordinance of the city of Toledo, Washington, adopting a new municipal fee schedule. Superseding prior fee schedules and providing for severability and effective date.
I'll make a motion that we accept ordinance eight one nine.
It's been moved by Rebecca and seconded by Jamie. Do we have any discussion? Alright, we will go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, we have no other business added for tonight, so we will go ahead and open it up for. The public input on any items limit three minutes.
Hello everyone, I'm Morgan. Um, let's see, um. Um, I have one thing, the park plan. Uh, I didn't see river hawks in the park plan. And I thought the park plan should include river hawks.
The comp plan? It hasn't even come to council yet.
Uh, I know, well, uh, it, it, I got a little, uh, reading of it. And, um, I thought maybe a river hawk should go in there.
Yeah, you'll have to bring that tomorrow.
As well as town deer, so. Uh, cuz they're our mascots. Um, and then, uh, let's see, um, oh. Uh, the, so, there's a. House that has been next to me for thirteen years. That is standing empty. And it's now falling apart. And so. I wonder what we can do is, I don't know how many buildings there are in town. I don't know, there's a handful maybe. But if we could get those. Brought up to code and families living in them, that's your weakness instead of. On, um, and windows broken. Um, so. I wa, I don't know if there's a, an ordinance that we have, um, I'm not sure at all, um. And. Then the other thing was, uh. I don't know if we've updated anything, if we thought about doing anything with the dump. Because it's such a cool space and it has a great view and. If we ever wanna do anything in the future for the next twenty years, we might wanna put a blurb in the plan. Just to say. It's there, so. There we go, there's my thing that's.
Thank you.
I believe you can get, you can get Emily the, uh. Our, our, like. Like the building, building ordinance?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Um, no, you're right. To Emily's point, do you know the last time that the building of the city has done like a derelict building assessment for just public works walk around? That's, hey, that looks abandoned, put it on a list and just. Have a list of the properties that. Uh, visually look like they could use some help.
I have been doing that.
Kind of been doing that now.
Yep.
And then the only other thing I have is. Do you guys know how the shut off valve ordinance and dormant water ordinance would complete like? So if you go and you shut off something in market dormant, are they gonna be required to put in their own shut off on that side before you turn it back on?
Yeah, I think in the dormant accounts, it's like we've got the one house that caught fire, um, and so I think, and we've had people that are, you know. Go out of town for a long time. I think that this one, those are like demos and stuff like that. So, yeah, it's, there's already gonna be permits pulled. They're already gonna be most likely doing a whole demo on the property, so. It would definitely.
Like snowbirds that leave in November and they come back in April, would they shut off in the middle or are they gonna have to do a shut off, their own shut off?
I don't think the dormant account one allows. For, for that. I think it was, I think some other cities, like I know Winlock does, they allow for people to leave. Um. I think it's like six months or something, though they've gotta be gone and they allow them to go dormant, but this one was just for. Fire investigation.
Yeah, so it was mentioned that like if we shut it off, we want the shut off out there and it's one of those. I would be surprised if I came back from vacation and.
No, and I think it's pretty cheap too, from what I was, um, understanding is, is it's like a hundred and fifty bucks to put a shut off. So it's not something that's outrageous, um, especially if they're already doing work.
Mine's right where my water comes in and you can see where Kip. Made the change to it when he was working on it and there's a valve right there. That's, it's pretty.
And the first week of our first house, we moved. And the first week of our first house, we moved in and we went. Went to turn on the main, no, this is back in Texas.
Oh.
We went to turn off, you know, to replace the faucet. Faucet broke, went to turn off the main, the main broke, and it was like one of those, a series of unfortunate events, but it's one of those. If we can build it in there, we're like anytime anybody does, even if it's just a suggestion of like, hey, put in a quarter turn just to.
Yeah.
I think that was kind of my goal of adding the anytime you do anything that caused the water to turn off, we'll make the, the shut off for a, a remodel. Trigger it.
Uh, yeah. Yeah, and I know a lot of the, like, the older houses around here too, it's. It's needed cuz.
It is.
But they break and, like, our rental house had the same, same issue. We didn't have a.
Yeah, for me in the sink and then you take the next piece off and that one breaks and you.
There's water everywhere, yeah.
Any other public input tonight? Right, no executive session, so I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make.
I had a question. Those, those forms that you fill out for complaints. Those could also be used for derelict property, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Oh, totally.
Yep.
So I just thought I'd bring that up. For those who. Might wanna do that.
Okay.
Yes, and we'll look at them.
Okay. My motion major.
It's already. All right. All those in favor? All right, opposed? Meeting adjourned.